Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending this evening. We were blessed with our first snowfall. I'm sure everybody's really happy about that. But thank you for attending this evening. I hope no one showed up last night thinking the meeting was going to be Tuesday. A normal schedule, but it was Veterans Day. And so to observe Veterans Day, it was moved for to Wednesday night. Roll call.
Cat.
Here.
Hey.
Here.
Melissa.
Here.
And Doug.
Right.
Okay. Oh, Pete Guarini is having some issues. He wasn't able to make it this evening, but I'm sure he'll be here at the next meeting. All righty. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Approval of minutes, October 14th, 2025. Doug made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Doug?
Yes.
Melissa?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Cat?
Aye.
Okay. Regular agenda adoption. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Cat?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And Doug?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda, budget amendment 2025-19, tax releases, resolution, public rights of right away and easements by the headwaters of the New River LLC, tax policy, project ordinance lease resolution. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's no discussion with a consent. So Cat?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And Doug?
Aye.
Okay, consent is approved. Okay, public comments. Hillary.
Frank?
Is it?
Is it? I'm sorry, how do you?
Irisi.
Irisi. Name an address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Frank Irisi. I reside at 148 Royal Oaks Drive. My wife Eileen and I have been residents of Blowing Rock since July of 2021. So yes, I'm a newbie. But I am interested in what's going on in this town. I've been away, working for the federal government, doing disaster relief. But as of Saturday, I'll be retired. So hopefully you'll see a little bit more of me. I have three items to discuss today, two very quick and one a little longer and much dearer to my heart. First, many of you have indicated publicly that you're in favor of term limits. I think it's time for this board to consider term limits for all elected officials in Blowing Rock. Secondly, there was a controversial application some time ago with regard to a hotel on Valley Boulevard. And much of the comment at the time at the planning board was regarding traffic. Had a currency study, a traffic and currency study been implemented and required, this application probably wouldn't have seen the light of day. Insofar as that, everyone knows in this town, traffic is a big issue. And if an applicant for a permit or an applicant that requires a variance should have a currency study as part of that package. And it would make life a lot easier for staff, it would a lot easier for those that are elected to have to make those decisions. Lastly, and the one that really is near and dear to my heart, is the American with Disabilities Act. As you may or may not know, I have a hearing loss. I have severe profound hearing loss. And I'm here to talk about that camera up there, which does nothing for people like me to be able to carry, to listen to what is going on here. That camera is 35, 40 feet away. People with hearing loss require to see the person that's speaking in order for them to understand. And the reason why this is important is because the CDC and NIH in 2024 indicated that 14% of the American population over the age of 12 have some level of hearing loss. In this town, given the demographics, that number is probably very conservative. So 1,400 residents, 14% is around 200 people. That's 200 people that are not able to engage in this body because of the fact that they cannot hear. And so the ADA says it requires public entity, this is, by the way, town attorney, this is Title II of the ADA. Part of it, I'm going to paraphrase some of it. The ADA requires public entities to take steps necessary to communicate effectively with people who have disabilities and use the term auxiliary aids and services to refer to readers, note takers, sign language interpreters, assisted listening, assisted living, assisted listening devices and so forth. This is a requirement for ADA. I worked for the Small Business Administration and they have to have meetings where people are in front of a monitor or in front of a computer screen so that the people that are listening can understand. Without any facial recognition, it becomes a tremendous challenge. And under the federal law, these entities must provide the ability for everyone to have equal access to the information. And that camera does not give equal access to all of the residents of Blowing Rock. So I would encourage you, please, to consider some other device, something in the well. If you've ever seen any type of hearing on Capitol Hill or even in Raleigh, you have a camera that whenever the mayor is speaking or Mr. Bass is speaking, this camera swings over to them. The person that is listening can understand it clearly. The listening device, these microphones, may or may not be good, but if it's coming from some other place, it's going to be very difficult. I've spoken to Mr. Fox and I stand ready to assist in that effort, whatever it is that can do. And I would be very happy to come back on another time and expand on these comments to go through specifics as to what this board and this council can achieve. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Given the average age of Blowing Rock's 110, but you have a very viable point. And my wife will be the first to say that I can't hear either. So it's not selective anymore. But thank you. All right. Uh oh. Deidra Sellers. Doug, I'm staying at your house tonight. If you would, please state the name and address.
Deidra Sellers, 137 Hilltop Way. I just wanted to make a comment about the town ordinances. I feel that we've gotten to the place where everybody has an exception. It's height, it's less green space, it's less parking. Surely the developers know what our ordinances are when they apply for a development. So I just wanted to remind everybody that during the elections, the people that ran all wanted to keep Blowing Rock charming and cute. And one way to do that is to follow our ordinances. And so just a reminder.
Special presentation. This is the presentation on the Japanese knotweed. David Goodson, David, how are you?
Good. First of all, I'm David Goodson, a full-time resident of Blowing Rock on 499 Wonderland Trail. And I want to thank the council and shame for allowing me to speak to you tonight about what I think is a problem that's facing Blowing Rock and it's going to explode out of control unless it's addressed. And that is Japanese knotweed, which I say is a major threat to the ecosystem and natural beauty to this town. This is a picture of it over off of Laurel Lane. I am not an expert of Japanese knotweed by any stretch of the imagination, but I am a member of BRAC, our Appearance and Advisory Committee, so I have a vested interest in the way this town looks. I also run a horticulturally based business that keeps me traveling all over the East Coast. And I've been in many places where this weed is out of control, similar to what you see with kudzu. We are right on the edge of that happening in this As I mentioned, I am not an expert, but I have spoken to many that are and met with many that are as well. George Sandusky, he is the Sustainability and Special Projects Manager for the Town of Boone. He spends 15 to 20% of his time dealing with invasive plants, which Japanese knotweed is. Emma Kreider, she's the High Country Watershed Outreach Coordinator for Mountain True, a local nonprofit. She has been battling Japanese knotweed in the upper Watauga River watershed for years. Wendy Patta Percy, she's the Middle Fork Greenway Director for the Blue Ridge Conservancy. Our own Cory Cathcart, who's the Landscape Director here in town. Several North Carolina agricultural extension agents and several North Carolina-based private contractors who deal with Japanese knotweed eradication on a daily basis. Couple more stock pictures, just so you can see what it looks like when it's in full flower. This is in August of the year. This is a pan out of a huge colony of it. And you can see it takes over everything. And it's here. So if you'll bear with me here, I'm going to give you a few statistics. I'll try to run through them. I won't read everything, but a couple of the most important ones. The first one displaces native vegetation due to its fast-growing dense aggressive growth. It causes terrible bank erosion problems. It lowers the quality of water for fish and wildlife. And the thickets can completely clog small waterways. I've seen this many places. Damages pavements, limits sight, visibility along roads, and roots can interfere with drainage and septic systems. It's very difficult to control because of its extremely vigorous rhizomes, roots that form underground and you cannot get rid of them by digging. The plants can re-sprout from small pieces and plant stems and rhizomes that fall into the water can create new infestations downstream. And that is a big deal there. Description, I've showed you several pictures, the large clump-forming herbaceous perennial. And a herbaceous perennial dies back in the winter. So right now, if you're looking for Japanese knotweed, it's the frost and freeze have knocked off the leaves and it'll start growing again in the spring. The rhizomes, the underground roots can spread at least 23 feet or more. And they also go down seven feet and forms large dense clones of male or female plants. The stems are thick and hollow and they look like bamboo. Flowers are small. They come on the plant in July and August. And in late July and August, these flowers return to seed. Habitat, basically it can grow anywhere and you can see it anywhere. Where I've seen it in town, I'll show you examples of wet areas, flood areas, as well as dry areas. It does prefer moist soil, but that's not a prerequisite. And it's most commonly found in flood zone along rivers and creeks, also grows in roadside ditches, basically anywhere there's unmanaged lands. This is the most important slide on the way it spreads because it's very difficult to get a handle on it. And the way it reproduces, it's tough to deal with. It typically starts growing in April or May or when it warms up around here. It reproduces both by seed and vegetatively from rhizomes underground. The root fragments as small as a half inch can form a new plant colonies and can also be spread and contaminated in fill material. And the point there is if you try to dig it up and you move the fill material, you're just moving it to a new location. You cannot get rid of knotweed unless you're digging 10, 12 feet down. Cutter broken stems can, will sprout if left on moist soil. Seeds can be viable for as long as 15 years, generally not that long, but several years they can lay dormant and they can come up anytime within four to five years. Then knotweed's canes, they die back in the winter. That's the stage we're in right now. They go dormant and the dead brown stems may remain standing through the winter. I'll show you some pictures of that here shortly. So this is a map I've just taken, the Chamber Tourist Map. And I have spent, I have walked every single road on this side of 321 and mapped where it's, and obviously I'm not going to anybody's yard, but I've mapped where it has a colony in this town. Now I'll reference Wendy Patta Persky, who is the Middle Fork Greenway Director. She's made the statement that all along the greenway they're developing, there is no evidence of knotweed. And she was proud of that. But there will be. My pointer's not working, but if you'll see the circles up top, those are all huge colonies right across from the Chetola entrance and several places along South Main or along Main Street. There's another colony at Cornish and 321. Then down here in the middle of the picture is a colony right below Myers Fabled Pizza. And if you'll notice, every one of those colonies is right on the headwaters for the Middle Fork. Those plants, if not dealt with, will start sprouting colonies probably around the Chetola Lake and certainly downstream before too long. Other major colonies, this is Ridgeline at Wheelie's, the old restaurant. And there's a huge patch there, a couple places on Main Street. And then up in Mayview, there's a couple patches along Laurel Lane that are near the Horse Show grounds and on Meadow Lane. I have not canvassed here. I've driven major roads, but I'm quite certain we have some colonies on this side of, on the other side of 321 as well. Couple pictures, a few pictures, these are in Blowing Rock. This one on the left is a colony right along Main between Boxwood Inn and Meadowbrook. This one is about one-third of the colony across from the entrance to Chetola. One on the left is West Cornish and 321. This one is right on Main Street at the Manor Inn. And the reason I showed this one is this is a one-year growth. So this just came up this year. It's right under the red bud tree, which is right along 321, which is right here. These are two of the same spot. This is overlooking Pine and Laurel, the development. This is the one that was in leaf with flowers. This is what it looks like when it's gone dormant. That's the canes that will stay around. So, quick lesson on the life cycle. The top part of the picture, that's what the roots do underground during the winter. Rhizomes continue to spread. Come April, May, they'll start putting shoots up when the weather gets warm. Still hard to see because sometimes they're covered by other plants. You're getting into May and June, there's this size anywhere from five to 15 feet. And then here's one when they flower late July, August, before going back to this stage here. This area here, when there's vegetative growth, is the only time you can effectively control this plant. So you've got about a five or six month window to address it. And how do you control it? The most effective way to control and eradicate are through proven herbicide applications at the appropriate time of the life cycle, which I just pointed out. There are several herbicides that are shown to be effective, all of which are readily included. So what steps do I think Blowing Rock should take? The Town of Blowing Rock must take the lead in any comprehensive plan of action since Japanese knotweed is on public, private, and town-owned land. As I mentioned, this plant is dormant now, so we've got about a five or six month window before the new growth starts coming up. So prior to new growth next spring, I think we should identify the infested areas that will need to be eradicated by either private contractor or a Town of Blowing Rock crew. If the infested area is on private property, secure permission to eradicate or ask the owner to take care of it. Basically have a plan of action to treat and eradicate once the new growth starts in the spring, generally probably May here. The other thing I think we can do is educate the public and town employees. I'd say have town employees, especially those that work outside, be aware of what this plant looks like once it starts growing and pass along those sightings to Cory Cathcart. Utilize the membership of the Blowing Rock Garden Club to educate members and town residents. And they are willing to be involved. I've met with them. They are already spreading information about what this is. And so they'd be more than happy to be involved with whatever the town comes up with. And the president has made that statement to me. Perhaps include the information in your address, Mayor, on your updates. Establish some type of hotline, whether it be phone, text, or email for residents to pass along Japanese knotweed sightings with a dedicated person to check on and follow up. And if Japanese knotweed is on private property, have a protocol for notifying the owner with options for eradicating the infected area. And finally, a realistic goal is to prevent Japanese knotweed from establishing a permanent presence in Blowing Rock town limits. And we're very close to that point right now. Be glad to answer any questions? Authority.
I know that when you and I read one of the worst places we saw was out there at Ridgeline, and it's already choking a lot of stuff out right out there.
Yeah. It's, I can't overstate this because it's, you know, we've accepted in this country kudzu being everywhere. This plant is doing the same thing in certain areas of the Northeast. It's all over the high country now in Yancey, Mitchell, and Avery Counties. And it got accelerated due to Helene spreading seed a lot quicker. And it's here now. And we, if we take it seriously, can keep it out of the town limits. We're not going to get rid of it elsewhere, but there are some steps, if we take it seriously, that I think we can eradicate it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You identified a place behind my manor.
Yes, sir.
And if it's, if you use herbicides, what does that do to the stream, the fish?
There are herbicides that, there's a couple classes of herbicides, all of which are available over the counter. And there's some that are safe around wetlands. And so I didn't bring a list of those, but I can get that. And if the town, Cory's crew wants to address it, he can get that, I can get it. And if we needed to hire some private contractors for some of the larger areas, they're used to dealing with those that don't harm fish and wildlife.
John, it'd be best for you to get in touch with Cory, with the town.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
That'd be your best bet.
Yes.
And you said livestock will eat it?
I'm sorry?
You said livestock would eat it.
No, I don't think I said that.
No, it was mentioned there, the cattle and goats would eat it.
Well.
How about deer?
Yeah.
We've got deer all over town.
Yeah, the deer probably will ignore it. But, you know, on unmanaged lands, or I'm sure cattle will eat it.
Yeah.
Does it kill the root?
Oh, no. And again, you cannot dig it up and kill it. It has to be treated with herbicides.
Okay. All right.
David, thank you so much for this presentation. This is something we need to be aware of. Could you go back over when is the best time
Yes.
to use your herbicides to eradicate it?
Yes. Okay, so right now we're in this stage of plant dieback. All these pictures I showed you, if you go around across from Chetola is probably the best example of a Ridgeline, you'll see the bamboo-like canes. So they die back and then these rhizomes and roots continue to spread very quickly underground. So then around April or May, probably May here, when it warms up, these shoots start coming up. So you can start a herbicide treatment here. If you do that, you'll probably have to do that two or three more times during the growing season. If you wait a little longer, when the plant is this big around here, that would be June, you can probably really knock it out with one or two chemical applications. But the bottom line, the only way you can treat it with chemicals effectively is in this stage of growth. And then in Blowing Rock, that would be from May through the end of September.
So it's absorbed through the foliage?
That's correct. Yes. And to reiterate at this point, there are herbicides that you can use effectively around waterways and flooded areas.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have an example of a regional municipality that has had a successful eradication program?
Boone. So George Sandusky, who I mentioned, I met with him. And that's his, well, his full-time job is sustainability for the whole town. And like I said, he spends 15 to 20% of his time on invasive plants, of which knotweed is one of the toughest to remove. Boone has a pretty extensive protocol about identifying different things. And then they send their crews out. He has kept knotweed out of Boone for the most part. It's around there a little bit. And there's other ones that he works on. The reason that knotweed really caught my eyes, I've seen it everywhere where I travel, and it's so difficult to control that if you let it get totally established here, you're not going to get rid of it. And if I went back to the map, oh shoot, well, the map that I showed you, all along the Middle Fork, if this isn't addressed, all of those circles will fill in over the next two years. And so behind your hotel, it'll be full. And it's getting, you know, it's getting there right now. So I think we have a pretty good window to address it before it starts growing again next spring.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So you've been in contact. Go ahead, Doug.
I think, you know, kind of like what we talked about, it's kind of like horsehair and we was trying to get rid of it. It's just, takes so many multiple applications because it goes so deep into the ground, more than anything. It is, you know, it goes, what, six foot, seven foot down?
More than that. It can go to 10 feet. So if you start treating it right when it comes up, it'll take multiple applications because there's so much root mass under. And you can do that. And if you wait a little bit longer, you're probably more effective once it's a little bit bigger.
So is Cory addressing this with the town?
They've been in communication.
Good. Okay.
I think, and I think there are certain areas where it's probably bigger than a town, than the town with Cory's, with his limited resources. He can do spot treatments when it shows up. But some of the bigger places like at Wheelie's, Ridgeline, and Chetola. and Ridgeline and across from Chautauqua, we're going to have to have a private contractor.
Okay.
My bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into the public hearing section. First one we're going to hear is a request by the Green Park Inn, Kevin Rothrock.
I want to present this amendment request for Green Park Inn for you. And I'm going to run through the staff report, and I have a few slides. Most of the information was in your packet. This is an amendment to conditional zoning 2024-04 for the Green Park Inn. John Winkler is requesting an amendment to the conditional rezoning ordinance of Green Park Inn at 9239 Valley Boulevard. The request is for a reduction in a 16-foot opaque buffer on the western property line adjacent to the Blowing Rock Country Club. This is along the, or the property boundary against the number four hole, the green, and then the number five T, which is right there at Go Fourth Road. Based on the, based on the site layout, the, of the project, the rear decking overhang of the condos extends further over the parking area than expected. And so the applicant needs four additional feet in the parking lot for clearances, and they wanted to reduce the buffer from 16 feet to four feet to gain that additional space. By reducing the buffer, the parking lot space depth of 19 feet, and the drive aisle of 24 feet will still remain and would meet the minimum code standards. This, this plan is, the site plan has been revised to show, this is the property line here, and shows a 12-foot buffer along this property line, and then when it gets to here, it goes back to 16. This is below the Green Park Inn condos, or the Green Park, Village of Green Park condos. And then the number four green is about right here, and I'll go back, and you can see that boundary. And so this is the hedge behind the green that's currently there now, and, which is, that hedge is right here. This buffer would be in this section right through here. So the applicant is requesting this waiver, including in your packet, the signed ordinance 2502 that was approved back in February of this year, and the conditions that were attached to that. That ordinance requires a change like this, would have to come back for council approval. And if approved, would reduce that buffer from 16 feet to 12 feet. Be glad to answer any questions. It's pretty straightforward, but it does require your approval if you choose to do I do have the landscape plan here. Again, this is an opaque buffer. Some of the boundaries require some opaque buffer, but this would be planted in such a way to be solid. Not as extensive as the current buffer is now with the golf course, but eventually to grow up and be that height.
So can you show us the extent of the reduction lengthwise?
From this corner here, this is all going to be reworked, so the final, this is where the driveway on the Go Fourth Road would be, it'd be from this point here. And this is the sidewalk on 321, so it'd be that full length of the parking area.
Where's Go Fourth Road?
There's the far boundary.
Okay.
Of the pavement, and the other is about, let's see, that's the property line, so the other is about right here.
So DOT still owns Go Fourth Road?
As far as I know, based on the property, I think there's right-of-way over it, but the property line goes to the center of the road for the golf course and for the Green Park Inn.
Yeah, DOT has rights to the road. Yeah, the public hearing is open if you'd like to come up and speak. Yeah, come on, no, it's open, it's open if you'd like to come up and speak, John.
If you're, if y'all are done with questions for me, I'll step aside.
Any more questions for Kevin?
So, so we're reducing the landscape buffer from 12 to 18, right?
No, 16 to 12.
16 to 12. Why is this showing 12?
It is. This is eight-foot building setback.
Oh, this is, this is what the change would be?
Yeah.
All right.
The eight there is a building setback. That's measured off the property line, too.
Okay, I didn't realize this was revised. So it's the landscape buffer extending into what is, what we've known as Go Fourth, the paved area of Go Fourth?
Yes. Yes. There's the property line there. That may, that does show the other side, so this is the far side of the pavement, that line right there. And then the other side is about right, right in here. So, and this property line runs down the middle of.
Okay, so it was mentioned that DOT has forgave or relinquished rights to Go Fourth Road from where to where? Because we've not seen anything stated from DOT. Just for the sake of knowledge, have we seen anything from DOT stating they relinquished rights to Go Fourth Road?
We have not. I'm not sure what that process would be for them.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that would be like for the town's involvement in it.
I mean, I know they offered the town, we denied it. We didn't want it at the time. But the surveys in town are very common. My property goes to the center of the road, my neighbor's property goes to the center of the road, but it's public right-of-way. So I think, don't we need to know what DOT, I mean, and where?
I don't see the relevance of that in this.
Well, because it's taking up part of what we call Go Fourth Road now.
But we've already approved 16 feet. That's farther. That goes somewhere, we approved that, so now we just want 12.
Another four feet.
And so that's not going to affect the road, that's going to take it, make more space there at the condo. So I don't know, I'm just having trouble seeing the relevance of that.
Does that, does that not take off, does that, the area, does that not take in Go Fourth Road now? I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, that'd be fine, go ahead.
Yeah, come on up, John, yeah.
Our sherberers said our property line is the middle of Go Fourth.
Right.
That's where the planting will start and move up the hill, so the plants will be in the old road.
Yes.
That's about, that's what you're asking. And can I comment more further?
Yes.
The reason we got into this, when we, when we're doing our planting, our decks are only 12 and a half feet off the ground on the first floor. Well, these trucks that deliver furniture and stuff, or could be as tight as 13 and a half feet, and the reason we're requesting this, I don't have the point of, I don't know how to use that thing, but anyway, we just, we just want to keep the trucks away from the building, four feet, to keep them from hitting our decks. If somebody, some kid was in a rental truck and not know what he's doing.
Right.
He could damage one of our decks, and that's mainly, we've got enough room, but we thought that extra four feet would make it safe, it's a safety deal for us.
Well, just try to understand, I'm just concerned, if we are, we are allowing a change going across what I consider still to be a public road, okay? Now, if DOT's relinquished rights to that road, so be it. I don't know where we fall into play with this.
I'm still having trouble.
Okay.
Chelsea.
No, you're fine, John.
No, you're fine. So, so the, the plan that was already approved provides for the property to meet the eight-foot setback, the existing eight-foot setback, and required a 16-foot buffer, which, eight of which would be in the setback, and an additional eight would be on our property outside of the setback. Still complying with the setback, we're not, we're not putting any improvements in the setback. All we're doing is changing the landscape strip from 16 feet to 12 feet. So your point regarding the road was only relevant last time, and it's not relevant now. Now, to your point of what's, the DOT has indicated that, as you recall, from the, from the prior widening, when it essentially shut down the access there, and, and there's no more access to use, to get to 321, or, yeah, Valley Boulevard. And they have indicated in discussions, but as is often the case with DOT, actually getting it to sign and send something over that says it's abandoning its right-of-way, is probably going to be something we continue to have to chase down. And I know that our folks have spoken to Shane about it, and we understand the town didn't want to take that back over. At least that was a discussion at some point. But, so when I say it's not relevant, I don't mean it's not a good question, because it is still a good question that has to get, we may have to continue that conversation. I just mean the request tonight, the request tonight doesn't change that that already was impliedly contemplated in the prior approval. But, and so what we're talking about is the strip of landscaping. So the land, the setback doesn't change, the strip of landscaping goes from 16 feet to 12 feet. And I would just also mention, I think the club representatives are here, but there's already been discussion between neighbors, and we always recommend whenever, whether it's a private residence or a commercial property, talk to your neighbor. And if they don't have a problem with it, then great. If they do, then we need to address that. So my understanding is that Mr. Winkler, Miller, and Warden have, have spoken to the club about, about its future plans for its half, and also, you know, what could be done that they both would be a win-win regarding the hole and the T there, so.
I understood all that.
Yeah.
And I knew that.
Yeah.
My question was being, I don't want to see a conflict with DOT. That's the bottom line.
Right, right. And that would be on, I would tell you, that would be on us. I guess my, my view, and I can ask, and you can ask Mr. Petrak to advise you on this certainly, but my view of it is, that would be an issue for the property owners to have to resolve with DOT if there is one, as opposed to something that the town would be taking on by approving or not approving this request. I think you guys are sort of absolved from any responsibility. It's, it's on us to resolve with right-of-way owners what would or wouldn't need to happen there. So.
You concur, Joey?
And that's my understanding as well. I also believe that we reached out to DOT and love to know about tonight's hearing as well, and I don't believe that there's a representative here to speak on that right-of-way.
And that's consistent with our, you know, we've reached out a number of times when this was first proposed over a year ago, and then in ongoing conversations, and I think they just kind of have, and I'm not speaking for them, my impression is they have bigger fish to fry, and it's sort of a, there's no road there anymore, it doesn't connect to anything. There is a road, there's pavement, but it doesn't connect anywhere, so we'll deal with it, you know, later, you guys. So we will certainly, as things come up, if we need to address it, or seek a relinquishment from the town for, to the extent it has a right-of-way, you know, we can address that.
Well, I heard sometime back that we're going to make that a four lane.
So, yeah. It's actually going to be a bypass.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's going to go right through the green hill and then merge with the parkway, because they're excited about that.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, that was a concern of mine.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if.
Yeah. No, no, it's a legitimate point. I just meant, I just meant in terms of it being a concern or an element you have to be concerned with for this decision, I would, it would be my opinion, it's not for this, but it is something that we'll have to continue to deal with as the owner. So, yeah. Thank you all. Yes, and Paul, I forgot your last name.
Bovensy.
Bovensy? Paul Bovensy is here from the club, so, yeah.
Paul, would you like to come up and speak?
Let me, let me just make one.
Yes, come on up, come on up, Will.
Okay. What, for everybody that knows the property, so this part of Go Fourth Road is, belongs to the club. Their landscaping behind the golf course is on the other side of this road. So.
Something better.
Yeah. So what we've been talking to the club about is, you know, we would go to here and then work with them to maybe move the hole back and the T back and capture that extra, what is that, six feet, what is it? No, half the road. Nine feet. Because they would like to be able to use that nine feet. They know, but if we fire us, you know, working with them, our landscaping comes in here, they can move, you know, their property back to there, which I think the golf committee and the group of billiards and Paul Bovensy's a manager of the club, and I think he's in all these discussions.
Yeah, we've had plenty of discussion about it.
Yep, Paul, why not just state your name?
Paul Bovensy, general manager, COO, Blowing Rock Country Club. We've had plenty of discussions, we've been back and forth, and we've revised this. We've gone through the committee structure as well as with the board, and it's mutually beneficial for the club and for the Green Park Inn if this does proceed. So obviously, it's contingent on what the DOT says with the road and how that goes, but should this happen, we have no issue with it. We're in support of it.
Aye.
Thank you.
Doug?
Would you be interested in increasing some of the landscaping, make it a little thicker now that you're reducing it from?
Kevin suggested, yeah, that we make it, even add stuff to it. I wasn't really understanding what you said, but we'll make it as thick as you want it to.
A lot of times we would require them to do a double stack of road of hemlock or orbital, but you can get too thick and it's counterproductive, but it needs to be spaced in such a way that you have an effective screen within, you know. You could have an effective screen immediately, as soon as you plant it, but if you go too far, it can be counterproductive. We've done that many times in the past.
Do we have any others from the public that would like to speak on this particular Counsel? Any other questions for John, or for Will, or Kevin, or Chelsea? No? Okay, thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion to close this particular public hearing?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, counsel, what are your thoughts on this?
I don't see a problem with it myself.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request to reduce the buffer from 16 feet to 12 feet. from sixteen feet to twelve feet.
Okay. Do we have a second? Further motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay, Kat?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thanks. Now, they put a four lane through there, we're going to be in deep trouble, you know? It's going to be hell coming off that T box.
Four lane, you know, maybe not. I'm not sure it would be a lot shorter. I'm not sure the club would be in favor of that.
All right, moving right along. Thank you. Thank you, guys. This is second public hearing. This is CC 2025-02 Laurel and Pine LLC. Mr. Rothrock.
Oh, here I go. All right, thank you. You may recognize this project. You've seen it a couple of times. Just last year, you approved what we call Pine and Laurel. We've changed the name to Laurel and Pine, and this change came about after their approval last year, and we worked with, with Will and his team and new architects onboard. This conditional rezoning is building off the one that's already been approved and going from eight townhomes to five. And if you recall, back in 2021, it was a fourteen-room hotel approved, then it went to eight-room townhome, and now it's five units. All of the units are three-bedroom, and so they modified the plans and want to rezone this for this five-bedroom unit, or five-bedroom townhome project. The setbacks for central business are fifteen feet, and that's measured from the back of the existing sidewalk or proposed sidewalk, whatever the case might be, and that would be on both Pine and Laurel streets. And the building meets those fifteen-foot setbacks, it's a five-foot setback on each side, in behind the village shops, and, and just above the meadow there at Ms. DeBoer's The, look at this site plan here, and so, the interesting thing about the way this was developed is, is proposed for development, is this is Pine Street, and you'd come in on Pine and, and drive through, and then access the garage units for each unit. And then you drive under this section of the building and under this section, so kind of a neat look to it. Let me get to the plans. These are the renderings. This is the view from behind the village shops. This is the, the view overlooking the meadow. This is coming in off Pine, so Pine will be right here, and you would drive through and access these units as you move on towards Laurel Lane. Let me talk about building height a minute. So, this plan, the, if you recall, back last November, Town Council approved ordinance amendments for downtown building heights, setbacks, new zoning districts, and in that, the maximum building height was changed to thirty-five feet. The previous townhomes that were approved for this site were approved that very night at thirty-nine feet, ten inches, and that was for two of the middle units. The, the current plan showed the building height at thirty-seven feet for this middle section here, thirty-seven feet, three inches, thirty-seven feet, one inch on these two end gables here, and then everything else, this is thirty-five feet, three inches, thirty-five, three, is that right, Matt? Thirty-five, three. So, what's been proposed at thirty-seven feet is two feet shorter than what was previously approved in last November. The applicant has requested a condition that the roof peaks be allowed to be increased to thirty-seven feet, three inches, and by doing so, meet the old provision that we had in the ordinance, that would, for every five feet of, of horizontal distance beyond the fifteen-foot setback, that they could increase one feet, one foot until you got to that part. And that, the way that it's designed now would meet that scenario that was under the old ordinance. Some of the architectural design elements, they've got some heavy wooden beams, vertical wood siding, horizontal lap siding, they have stone veneer, stucco in some areas, and some of the chimneys, they have some stucco added to that, architectural roof shingles. There's some metal roof accents that are on some of the eve dormers and shed dormers that are on that. Parking on the site is required to have fifteen spaces with, counting the garage spaces and the surface parking spaces, just off through the side of the drive-through area, they meet the minimum requirement for that. Fire apparatus could not travel through the site, so the building will be sprinkled, and this shows the scenario where the fire trucks would be, and where to fight fire, and showing the hose full in that situation. But still, because they could not meet that, the, the building will be sprinkled. Stormwater runoff from the site will be conveyed through an onsite detention system that's actually already been installed and connected to Pine Street. The utilities, water and sewers, already been installed from the previous project, and that's been connected. There's a hot box that's been installed on Laurel Lane side, and that is for the sprinkler and backflow, backflow preventer. It's real bright silver color, and we've asked them to, to camouflage that and paint it and landscape around it best they can to try to minimize the appearance of that. Garbage collection will be through rollouts with an enclosure.
It's not on this plan.
It's not on this plan? The site's well landscaped and meets the minimum standards for, for landscaping. The applicant proposed conditions, the property must be combined by recombinations prior to the issuance of the first building permit. Number two, applicant must submit and receive approval of a method to camouflage and screen the hot box already installed along Laurel Lane. And then, number three, building heights may step up beyond the thirty-five-foot maximum height at a rate of one vertical feet, one foot for vertical height for every five feet horizontally, and that maximum will be thirty-seven feet, three inches. A plan that was added to the, just, this was added in your packet, I inserted it into the PowerPoint here, the architect has shown those areas that are over the thirty-five feet to be these two gables, this ridge here, well, that, sorry, this gable here and this ridge. You can see it from different perspectives on that plan. Planning Board met on October 16th, made a recommendation to approve the conditional rezoning with the following conditions: Building height must be limited to thirty-five feet, and that stucco not be used as building material. In your packet, you receive ordinance 2025-01, draft, Exhibit A, Exhibit B, that has the submitted conditions, I just went through all the site plans and, and architectural renderings and elevations. Be glad to answer questions, the applicant's here to summarize as well and answer questions.
Counsel, we, this public hearing is open. Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, horse, is HVAC going to be on the bottom or is it on the top?
I don't know, Doug. I'll reserve that one for the applicant.
And where are the additional parking spaces again?
So, each, each dwelling unit has two garage spaces. So, that's ten, and then there's one, two, three. That's four. Am I missing one? Oh, okay. Under this porch is here, there's, there's one on each one of those. Parallel space.
Parallel.
Yes.
And did you say the garbage would be a rollout to one end or the other?
I believe so. Originally, it was, it was on this, this side.
Because can the garbage truck get in there or be in the firetruck?
On the street and not drop through. If there's a point where they need to be pulled out to the street, if they're just five rollouts, they'd need to be in some type of corral and screening provided for that.
But we don't know that location right now.
That's where we had it on previous plan. We could just take care of this plan, it'd be the same, same location as it was in previous year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel, you'd like to, got questions for the applicant? I think Doug might, I think it was for HVACs.
Yeah.
Yeah. State, state your name, address.
Matthew Jones, MHA Architecture.
Can, can you elaborate on the need to exceed the thirty-five feet?
I would say it's a, a sort of byproduct of good design. We could probably make it within the thirty-five feet, and it would be a more boxy design, it would have less articulation of the facade, in my personal, professional opinion, whatever you want to call it. Having that sort of tiered approach to the units, breaking up the facade, breaking up the mass, will lend a better product and, and a better design for the, for the community. We tried to keep it pretty minimal in our impact, and it was kind of a toss-up. We talked with Kevin a lot in working through this. The other way to approach that would have been to request a minor reduction in the roof slopes, but with the roof slopes, ceiling heights we needed to meet, and trying to get that little bit of articulation of facade, it bumps it over that, that two feet and change.
What are your roof slopes now?
They are predominantly six on twelve, which is the code minimum.
Anything less than six and twelve?
I believe a couple of the accent roofs, which are allowed to be, are four and twelve.
The shed roofs?
The shed roofs, yeah, just the little, the little ones over the, the end windows there.
Kevin, would we need to add that to it as a condition?
That'd be sort of an alternate path.
As the, for the little dormers and little, I don't think so.
Doug, you had a question about HVAC?
HVAC.
Yes, sir. They'll be located, you can see there's kind of these outhoes here and here, and then there's similar that don't read quite as well, but they'll be tucked behind landscaping on that front facade there. So, they'll all be well screened, and obviously, the, the small suitcase style units.
There is a, Kevin, please correct me if I'm wrong, there's a requirement to have thirty percent windows on the lowest floor?
I see the street.
Yeah.
Let me get back to you, Doug.
Did you say the roof pitch would have to change to bring it down to thirty-five?
That would be an alternate compliance path, yes.
Right.
And it'd be something around a five to five and a half roof pitch, just for your understanding.
Does that meet our code?
Five and a half doesn't technically say is minimum of six.
Six.
But it would get you under thirty-five feet, presumably.
Correct, yeah. That's an alternate path. We could look at that as an alternate condition, I don't think we have any objection to it. Yeah, I think, I think five and a half is adequate for, you know, dealing with snow and whatnot, so.
Fifty percent. So, that would apply to this end wall and this from here.
Fifty percent windows?
Windows and doors.
Windows and doors.
It would just be that, that stretch right there. This is, this is recessed back like that. That's not, that's mostly open.
I'm more concerned about that than I am the height. Would that be achievable to?
I believe so, yeah. They don't have calculations on the front, but I believe we had run the calculations back way to the initial design.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Sorry. We had done the calculations back way made the initial design. I don't have them in front of me, but I believe we were meeting, I would double-check it, and if not, we can increase.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm not seeing any windows on the street side on the first floor. Well, I was choosing one.
So, you're saying the door doesn't say we would have to have fifty percent of that
Counsel?
Well, I want to compliment you, I think it's very attractive.
Appreciate that.
As you said, it's a lot of finistration, and it's a really, it's a really nice piece
Do we have any from the audience, the citizens that would like to speak on this? You may come up. You, you may come up.
About the stucco.
You may come up. Just state your name and address for the record.
Jamie Dixie, 193 Norwood Circle. Just want to know about the stucco. There was a requirement about the stucco. Did it get removed?
That is still up for discussion.
I'll, I'll highlight the areas that would have stucco, just so you're aware, and then we can discuss it. It's not a hill we're willing to die on, so. But it's, it's really limited to these three garage rounds facing the backside.
I didn't know if it was part of the area where you're going to have to add more windows.
No, no. It's pretty minimal, and again, it was just that area having a garage, felt like it was getting a little bit monotonous, so we added a material shift to just kind of break up that, but we can either locate a different material or extend the wood siding. It's not, it's not something that's critical, I think, to design.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak from the audience?
That fifty percent requirement of windows and doors on the first level, explain to me how you're going to make that work.
I'll have to look at it. I don't have it up, a plan off the top of my head, but we'll go back and evaluate that, and we'll work with Kevin to make it happen.
It's, it's on these two ends.
What is on that floor? Is that like a?
This portion right here would be predominantly stairs, so opening up the stairs is not a huge issue. I think there's, we go to, yeah, I mean, it's stairs, and then there's a portion here that's not extensive or drastic, but we can open up the stairs and we can at least throw a window and cause it.
This is the area we're talking about? Yeah.
On the street, just streets. Counsel, what do you think?
So.
Are you?
I'm talking to you. Is that what I'm supposed to?
No, Dave, you can't. Well, we need to close, probably need to close the public hearing, and then you can.
All right.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, is. Now, is there any additional discussion the council would like to have with counsel before a motion is made?
Yes. So I did not vote for the project that came before us last year or whenever it was. It's been a couple. Primarily because of the height. You know, I'm in favor of less condos. So instead of eight, five, like that. And I do appreciate the fact that they've brought the height down from what was approved last time. But I think when you, when we talk about the charm of the town, a lot of the charm of the town for new development is going to be having something that's attractive. And if they have to make it more of a box to meet that maximum height, I don't think anybody's going to be happy with that in town. What do y'all think? I mean, the architecture is more attractive on this one. I agree. And I walked Main Street and I tried to envision what we'd be looking at from Main Street for those peaks. That's pretty much it, I think.
You're talking about leaving it as is on the height at the 50% that David's wanting on the windows or doors.
And removing the stucco.
Making and the stucco. Correct?
Yes. Although the stucco material that Kevin showed me.
Doesn't look bad.
Is like what they have at Billmore Village, which is really nice.
Right.
But we did say in the ordinance, no stucco.
No, it can, you can do it there. You just can't be on Main Street.
On Main Street.
Yeah, central business, you can do it if you approve. I mean, it's an available option. And in the case here, it's minimal. It's not like the side of a building or the front of a building that we have already on Main Street. That is, that's all there is, is stucco. This is a small little accent. And what I showed you was what they call pebble dash. And it has a good look if it's used. Kind of neat, but.
Counsel? I'm sorry, David. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Did I interrupt you?
Wasn't me.
Okay. Did I interrupt you?
No. I was going to ask counsel what you all wanted to do.
Well, I wanted to discuss the windows because I know what the ordinance says, but also know that I don't want to be looking at a window here at a staircase either. And I've seen fake windows like we have on the AT&T building, which look fake. Sometimes, you know, it just depends on what you're using. So I'm not, I don't know. How do y'all feel about the windows on the?
I feel if it's landscaped right, you're not going to see that area anyway. I mean, because you're landscaping that buffer between that wall and the street. I mean, just tossing that out there. Would think that maybe you could make that just a little bit better on your landscaping on the ends there.
Because that's going to be walking height. And I mean, nobody wants, it's going to be more like looking inside a parking facility than inside of.
The one on Pine Street is much closer. The one on Laurel Lane is probably 40 feet off the street. And the hot box I talked about is sitting right in front of it. That's the first thing you're going to see. But they will landscape and have more opportunity to landscape the Laurel Lane side. The other will have some, but it's going to be closer.
I think the landscaping on the bottom with the windows that they are showing in their sketch would be much more attractive than adding extra windows in stairwell area.
Which one?
I think it would land down better with what we're trying to do down Laurel Lane right there.
You're saying the landscaping will?
Yeah.
If this is Laurel Lane side, this part is further away and you've got some landscaping there. And the drive doesn't come straight out. It has a little bit of curvature to it. That was on the original plan too. But it can be landscaped well enough. The rest of the building, your eyes not really drawn to that first level part. It's the rest of it because it's really good design.
Come back up. Was there a about the HVAC units? Mechanical units? Where are they located? Did I miss that?
Yeah.
I did?
Yeah, you missed that section.
You were deep in thought.
So there's some alcoves that are screened here and here on these units. And then there are some recesses elsewhere that'll be a little bit more landscaped, whereas these have more of like a wood slat screen. But then we kind of tucked into different areas of the facade in front.
And screened.
And well landscaped, yes. And, you know, they're a little like three by five suitcases. There's not a lot to try and hide, so they should, they should tuck away pretty well.
So are you depending on landscaping or screening material?
A little bit of both. Depending on how much depth we have, we may want to reinforce the landscaping with some fencing. I think for, at least for these ones, we're going to rely on landscaping only. There's a little more room there. These ones here, we're tucking it into a little nook in there and I don't think landscaping would grow well. So we're using a screening material in those locations. It is, it's a horizontal wood side.
Okay.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to approve the project as presented with the condition that the garbage corral will be included. I'll only mention that because it's not on the plan. And then consideration for additional landscaping on the street sides.
That's your motion?
That, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Okay, Doug's second. Any additional discussion? No, okay. Kat?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Doug? Okay.
Good luck with your proposal.
Thanks. Good luck, counsel. All right. Right along here, regular agenda. We have to fill a position with TDA that is now vacant and the council is considering three applicants. Ben McKeeson, Irwin O'Hare, and Melena Clinton. Did you all have time to look at their applications? And if you have someone like?
The ballot, yeah.
Yes. Ballot there, Hillary?
Does anybody need a pen?
Yeah, I guess names on them like usual. Correct. You know, you can tell them what you. Or you can leave it off.
Did you put Albert's name on there?
Pete Garin. That's what he guessed for not being here.
I just didn't think about that, Dave. Good idea.
I only count it as a tie.
So dramatic.
Okay, shred mine.
Cool. All right, moving right along here. All right, now we're at the official reports and comments. Ladies and gentlemen, I guess you all are all aware that Mr. Shane Fox has taken a what might be considered motion and moving on to a neighboring county to take over his county manager. You know, I've never been able to fault anyone for trying to better themselves for their family and for themselves. And I think we were very blessed to have Mr. Fox with us for five years? Seems like just yesterday. But, you know, he assisted the council and myself and department heads, everybody to accomplish so much. We over, we well exceeded over $35 million in capital projects. It took our town to the next level. And so first, I would like to say thank you, Mr. Fox. Thank you for your service. And that being said, our next step is to hire a interim manager, which we will make that decision possibly tonight in closed session. That interim manager will be here while the council interviews individuals for the permanent position to take Mr. Fox's role. So I want to thank everybody for coming out and voting. I thought the turnout was good for an off-year election and my hats off to everybody that so chose to run. That is tough. And so thank you, thank you so much. You eating dinner?
I am, I'm hungry. I want to congratulate Shane on his new job. Now, I've got to sign this. I want to say how much you'll be missed. You are a public servant of the highest caliber. You're a good manager. You're a good financial expert. You're just, you've got, you've got everything going and you need to progress your career. Now, so, and I'm totally supportive of what you're doing. But, you know, I'm sad for us, so anyway.
David?
It's hard to go third or probably worse fourth or fifth. But, yeah, it's, first, it's been the utmost privilege to have worked with you. And it's important to say work with. And to get to do that twice was even better. But you're a friend, you're a consummate professional. I adore you and your family and I wish you, as Albert would say, Godspeed and the best of luck. The other thing is I won't say is also been an incredible privilege to serve with Melissa and with Pete. And I'm going to miss you guys. And I really am going to miss sitting between two nice ladies, so.
Typical architect.
Much better than sitting beside some other folks.
I get it, Dave, I get it.
Make sure you request my seat.
I've forgotten to say that, but yes, you will be missed, Melissa.
Thanks.
Can't back up.
I am backing up.
Reverse order.
As David said, it is hard as you go down the line because it's all been said, but you will be missed. It has been a great honor to serve with you and to call you a friend. And it has also been an honor to serve. And you're making me emotional now for four years to my community, so thank you.
I'm not sure it's a promotion. I know where you're going and I know how close some people are down there. All kidding aside, we've had a great friendship. I know it's not goodbye that we've seen a bit of you. Your ties are still here. For me, going forward, is I've had for 16 years a picket on one side of the other of me. And that's what's going to feel strange, you know? Went from Phil to Ray to you. And you've been the best. You heard that, right? But that's, that's some adjustment to get you used to, so.
And they might be better off without a picket up here. It'll be quieter. I'm not going anywhere. Maybe the back row again, but.
Joey?
Mr. Fox? Okay, well, we'll get to the comments in a minute. Let me give some updates. That's what I need to do to start with. Memorial Park, concrete was poured today. About 60% of the curb and guttering was poured. The remainder will be poured tomorrow. Sidewalk scheduled for Friday. And then the last piece of that is the asphalt, which is scheduled for the first of next week. So a couple of days this week, they weren't able to work with the weather. But we're that close within the next week of having that project complete. And that's a great thing. Phase three of that project has been a privilege to be able to see phase one, phase two, and phase three to completion. So I'm glad to know that they're just days away from being able to say that project's complete as well. USDA, as soon as the federal shutdown is over, we have everything needed and ready to submit to start the bid solicitation process. That's not going to happen during my time here, but will happen more than likely in the month of December with those bids being opened and brought to you all in January. Again, that's our USDA loan for water and wastewater plant upgrades along with the much-needed replacement of the Mayview lift station. The audit work was completed back in September. This year, the LGC changed the deadline from October 31st to December 31st. Therefore, we are expecting our report to be completed in the next 30 days and brought to you all and presented to you all. And again, just a thank you to Ms. Brown for all the work that has gone into that. But the audit work, field work has been completed. It's just in the wrap-up stage now. Again, that date has always, used to always be October 31st is now December 31st. And that's to give more time for counties, et cetera, to have that work completed. Lot of IT work going on, not just with the finance software, but also with the website. The website looks fantastic. It's going to be very similar to what the town of Boone looks like and that is still set to go live on January 1st. You all will probably see some beta versions of that as we roll through the holidays into December. But the snippets we've seen look great and that is scheduled to be live and to the public January 1st, which is fantastic because it's much needed. Back to your comments, unless you have anything you'd like to ask. It has been a privilege. First council that was able to hire me, some of you were up here during that time, to this council. It's been a nice road of accomplishments with projects. Mayor mentioned $35 million. Each month, I've had a chance to stand up here and go through all the projects and go through all the updates. And those are extremely important to be able to pass along, give you updates. But at the heart of it, it's about people. You mentioned public services. But at the heart of it, it's about people. You mentioned public servants. I'll start by thanking my family. This is a family job. This is not a one-person job. This is everyone. Articles were written. You saw pictures in the paper of how invested my family has been, and I couldn't have done this job without them. My wife and children being so invested in this community and supportive of everything that I've done. Past them, it becomes the people here, not only you all and the citizens, but the employees and what they bring to the table. You know, over the past few months, we've had a chance to shine a light, and other entities have on the employees and the work that they bring, the accomplishments from the work that they do each day, whether it's 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM with water leaks, or sometimes like last week, it's all night long with water leaks. Or whether what, it's the police department and the unsung heroes that they are, and the work that goes on 24 hours, seven days a week, 365, the fire department. Whether it's Hillary and collecting taxes and being a clerk and wearing many, many hats, or whether it's finance, or even Kevin and planning and zoning with Brian and John and Taylor. Landscaping, the accolades they receive and parking wreck and all the things that we've asked them to do over the years, and they just keep expanding. It's about the people. It's about the people that serve this town. From my perspective as a manager, they've made this job easy. But it goes one step beyond that. It's about the people in those positions that really make this job what it is. It's the stories. It's the family. It's the weddings. It's the births. It's the deaths. It's the tears. It's the happiness. It's all the things that are wrapped up into those people. The people are in those positions, and the positions do the work. The people are what make this place special, and it's what's made this job special. And I want to say thank you to you all, and thank you to the citizens. Thank you to my family. And thank you to the employees for allowing me to experience five years of time with each of you and the stories you've shared, and the tears and the laughter and all the things we've had a chance to be a part of. I love you guys, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, somebody will make a movie of this one these days. All right, we're going to go into closed session. We're going to take a 10-minute recess.
North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A5, discussion of potential property acquisition. And North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A6, personnel.
Take a 10-minute breaker.